Mr. Phelps.
I might drop out here for a second because my computer's. Let me see if I can. There we go. Okay.
Mr. Evans, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Good evening. I would like to bring the September 16th, 2020 meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors to order. Ms. Caldwell, well, could we have a roll call, please?
Thanks, Mr. Phelps. Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Here.
Ms. Joseph?
Here.
Ms. Fagan?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Chavon?
Here.
Mr. Phelps?
Here. Okay, Mr. Evans, can we have the invocation and the pledge, please?
Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer. Bless all schools, colleges, and especially the Interboro School District and grant to this board and their deliberations this evening. The spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge. What is undertaken always be done in charity and in peace. And what we do might be for the benefit of others. All this, we ask in your name. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag. United States of America and to the Republic.
For which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have any public comments?
No, sir.
None? Okay. Moving on to number three then. Mr. Evans.
Motion 3.1 that the Board of School Directors approve the appointment of Ann Kradzuski to represent Region 3, Precinct 4, and the Borough of Glen Olden.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? I, for one, would like to say welcome back. Any other comments?
Mr. Phelps, I want to thank, I know we're about to vote on it, but just thank Ms. Kradzuski for throwing her hat in the ring and getting back involved in the school district.
Thank you, Mr. Chavon. I'm sure we all appreciate it. Anybody else? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries 7-0. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 4.1 that the filing minutes of the regular meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors held on August 19th, 2020 be approved.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries 7-0. Next, we'll hear from our solicitor, Mr. Pupio.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Welcome back, Ms. Kradzuski. Nice to see you again. The report that I have for the district this month focuses on the reassessment that has been conducted by Delaware County pursuant to a court order. If you'll take a look back, I think I mentioned it many of my previous reports over the past couple of years. That, that the reassessment was there and the importance that it had. I did that because, you know, I, I, I served as a solicitor for the Board of Assessment during the last reassessment. And it is a core function of county government that the assessments that are provided to the county, to the school district, and to the municipalities. Be as correct as possible, in my opinion. In 2016, there was a lawsuit that was filed by some property owners in Haverford. That basically alleged that the county was not bringing on new construction at the appropriate rate. And that there, that the assessment system at that point was so out of whack. That the only, the only way to fix it was to order a reassessment. The judge found in favor of the petitioners at that point and against the county and ordered a countywide reassessment. That was scheduled to take place at this exact timeframe. I, you know, I was, I was concerned for quite some time anecdotally. Hearing things that, that, that did not start to make sense to me. And then unfortunately, COVID hit. And I tend to think that there, there could possibly have been a number of issues that arose. At any rate, some of the things that brought us to this point. Where the fact that when the county provided. An assessment to everyone that lives in Delaware County, everyone on this screen and most of the folks listening. They did not provide that same record to the school district. So the township, the, the, a property owner such as us would have gotten our assessment and said, okay. All right, based on what the county tells me, I think I'm good. And what the county basically says is if you believe that the fair, that the value on your home, as shown on this new assessment. Reflects the fair market value, then you should be okay. That is true if all the other assessments are correct. And unfortunately, when we began to see some things and look at some data from one or two school districts. We saw some significant items that were problematic. Springfield School District, Radnor Township School District, Rose Tree Media School District, Marple School District. Are all in the top three school districts that saw a significant shift. From commercial to residential. Now, such a shift in and of itself is not illegal if that is, if, if that was truly the fair market value. But remember, these are fair market values numbers from August of 2019, not this year, not COVID numbers. In those school districts. They lost at the market height, significant valuation in their commercial properties. For example, almost every commercial property on Baltimore Pike in Springfield had a reduction. When you have that issue. It very simply encapsulates a problem that your residential taxpayers are going to bear. So before a school district. Even reviews its budget for 21, 22, or, or. This coming budget coming up, before they even review it and determine whether there's a need for a tax increase. Residents in those towns are automatically getting as much as a 6%, 7%, or 8% tax increase. The numbers don't add up. As it pertains to Interboro, our expert. Reviewed, our expert Jack Coyle reviewed about 14 of the school districts. And Interboro has some unfortunate issues. In that we lost $9.2 million in apartment value. All commercial value, $38,406, and $406,129. Industrial, we gained 2.6 million. But for residential. We gained 3.69 million. So there's a big shift even in Interboro. That is concerning. More importantly, for Interboro and any taxing authority is what happens next year. What happens next year is right now, a property owner such as us or a commercial property owner. Can only come in and challenge the reassessment number as of 8/1/19. They can't say, I am a restaurant on, I own my own building, I'm a restaurant on Chester Pike. And I've been closed for X number of months and therefore my property is worth significantly less. They're not able to do that. They're able to do that next year. We, as a school district, are limited by case law in trying to pick up value next year. So there are significant issues and concerns. That I simply believe they got the reassessment wrong. Without delving too deeply into the topic, the answer is a coefficient of dispersion. Which is the differences that exist in the assessments and they are, there's a range of that. After a revow, such as the one we went through. Our expert tells us the coefficient of dispersion is approximately 13 or 14. That should not happen. It should be in single digits after a revow. Additionally, our expert tells us, again, Jack Coyle, who has been, who's the expert for probably 13 of the 15 school districts. Provides us with the information that the predetermined ratio that the county set of 100% is not accurate. That it's only about 92 or 93%. So what to do? Well, the board already authorized us in a preemption to take any and all action that we felt was necessary. And using an appropriate formula and not just picking everything out of a hat. We appealed a number of properties to the Board of Assessment in an attempt to claw back those values. Additionally, we filed a request with the county. To meet on behalf of 11 school districts raised their hand and concurred with us or were willing to join in. The county got back to us and said that, that they were proceeding forward. They appreciated the opportunity that we provided them, but they, they did not have an interest in the conversation. Which was disappointing to me because I think there are many other options or opportunities rather than litigation. But we also filed a general allegation with the Board of Assessment that we believe the reassessment was conducted improperly. And the solicitors who are impacted the most are speaking weakly to determine the next course of action. That course of action could be. Filing petitions to join the 2016 case that requested, that ordered the reassessment. And filing an emergency injunction along those lines. Waiting till the Board of Assessment denies our request. And the third option is at that point to file a class action. Or a, or a unified emergency injunction requesting the county to. Stop the reassessment and prohibit the installation of same or order another reassessment. It, it appears to, to me from looking at numbers. You know, these are, this is mass appraisal. And it is as much art as it is science. There's deviations that are permitted. And it, it becomes a complex topic. I don't say that to speak down to anyone. I just say it that it, it, it doesn't make sense. A mass appraisal system is an algorithm. They use that mass appraisal system for the commercial properties. I think from everything I can see, they got the residential properties darn close to correct. I don't know if anybody on this, and I'm not asking anyone. I know, I know the office I'm sitting in, I looked at, I thought was, was pretty darn close. My home was pretty darn close. Other residential things I saw were pretty darn close. But that is based on information they have. They send somebody out and fill a card out. The commercial assessments are all based on a mass algorithm. And what factors were put into it, what controls were utilized, what, for a non-technological person such as myself, what tweaks were applied to that formula? We don't know, but it certainly appears to be incorrect. And these are values that we, we as residents, we as taxing entities are most likely going to live with. Absent court intervention for the next 20 years. And for a district such as Interboro. And, you know, in our, in our regular meetings, when there are tax assessment appeals. You know, you, my office, we spend lots of time on one property trying to prevent any decrease, working at it as hard as we could. And when you see decreases of, you know, $38 million in commercial value. That's tremendously concerning. And the exact impact of that is not necessarily directly known right now. But it cannot possibly be good. This year and especially next year. So that is unfortunate news, but we are on it. We're paying attention to it. We're looking for solutions to litigate it. I cannot speak to the county as to. As to why there was not a desire to meet. Other than, you know, they feel that, that they feel. That the communication from the solicitor to me in a, in a very kind fashion was, look, we were ordered to do a reassessment. We did it. If you think it's wrong, you need to challenge it and we'll follow what the court tells us. So. I really think there were some missed opportunities. To provide it. You know, there are a lot of COVID reasons that could be used to say, let's hold up a second, let's wait. Let's make sure we get this right. It's just a crucial number for everyone, especially for school districts and especially for school districts. That have a challenged tax base. You know, examples of Chester Upland or some of the much more challenged districts are. William Penn, things like that. You know, they are really struggling financially. And a district that works as hard as Interboro at finding dollars, spending them the most efficiently. You know, shifting a burden to residential taxpayers is not the goal of this board. And should not be the goal of a reassessment. So it's unfortunate news, but we are continuing to work on it and I will provide you with updates as to the direction that we are going. You have authorized our office earlier in August to proceed forward, so I need no further authorization from you. But I will advise to you as to what I think and my office thinks and the fellow solicitors think. The best idea is to remedy the problem.
Mr. Pupio, could I ask you a quick question?
Yes, sir.
All the figures that you gave is for the apartment values, commercial, industrial, da-da-da-da-da. Like when I do the math, it's short like 42 million. Where does that like? Fall into play, that 42 million, where does that get spread out or?
I, I, I don't know. I don't know where the value went. That is part of the problem. And from a county perspective. You know, from a county perspective, the general theory was a third go up, a third go down, a third stay the same. You know, that's a, that's a, that's a reasonable outcome for reassessment.
That's not how it's working out.
Does not appear to be what happened here. All of the commercial went down while some of the residential went up.
Right.
There just was not, I mean, we, we all live in the community. That was just not the real estate values in the commercial properties that we saw in August of 2019. So the numbers just don't make sense. They don't make sense to our expert. I mean, I brought it to him. You know, the hair on the back of my neck went up. When the following situation took place, a property owner that I represent in some different counties settled an assessment case. Like many things, the school district was high, the property owner was low, they settled in the middle, you know, or towards the range of the school district. At about $29 million for the value of a property. And the person that represents the property owner next door came in and said, hey, guess what I just got? I settled this case last year for 29 million and the county put a value of 15 on it.
Oh, that's great.
I mean, I, I knew there was a problem at, at that point. And, and began making sure that we were there. But things like us having to make, we had to make a right-to-know request to get all of our tax records. So we didn't have the information. That every taxpayer had to determine that there was a problem. I'm not saying the county would have reacted to it on July 1st if we approached them with that. I really don't, I, I think they provided us with their answer. But the reason that we weren't able to, to state previously. Was because we didn't have the information as a school district and then we were, we were not able to get the information as a county to our expert to compare.
Well, stay with it, Mr. Pupio.
I'll keep you posted.
Don't let them get away with it.
We're at the four.
Okay.
I, I don't believe it. Look, I don't, when I say get them away with it, I don't believe there was an intentional issue. I don't believe any of that. We just think there, there's an error.
Get it straightened out, please.
Needs to be corrected.
Yes, absolutely. All right. I'm sure that concludes your report.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Pupio.
Sorry for the longer report than usual.
No problem. We appreciate it. Okay, moving on to number six, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Finance, motion 6.1 that the Treasurer's report for the month ending August 31st, 2020 be approved.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 7-0. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 6.2 that fund dispersments in the amount of $6,768,757 and 13 cents be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries 7-0. Do we have any correspondence, Mr. Evans?
No, sir.
Moving on to number eight.
From the Office of Personnel, motion 9, motion 8.1 to 8.8, starting on page two and ending on page five.
Second.
Motion have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 7-0. Next up, Mr. Evans, number nine.
Retirement, motion with regret that the filing retirements be approved. Letitia Carney, High School Secretary with six years of service to the district. Be approved for retirement effective August 27th, 2020. And 9.2 Paul Griffith, Bus Monitor with Transportation with one year service to the district be approved for retirement date effective August 31st, 2020.
Second.
Motion have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 7-0. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
From the Office of Curriculum and Instruction, motion 10.1 to 10.10, ending on page six.
Second.
Motion have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 7-0. Next up, Mr. Evans, 11.
From the Office of Special Education and Pupil Services, motion 11.1 to 11.11, ending on page seven.
Second.
Motion have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 7, or the motions carry 7-0. Next up, Mr. Evans, 12.
From the Office of Technology, motion, discarding items be approved, 12.1 to 12.5.
Second.
Motion have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Excuse me, Mr. Phelps, can I interrupt?
Sure.
Can we have Mr. Evans read that again? It should have been 12.1 to 12.6. That was my error.
Yeah, I was just going to read the 12 points explosion, but.
Yeah, because I, I might have a question about that one, so.
Okay, so 12.1 to 12.5, any questions or comments? No. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Motion carries 7-0. Next motion, Mr. Evans, 12.6.
12.6 that the Board of School Directors approve the purchase of 10 hotspots from T-Mobile at $20 per month for one year. Total cost of $2,400 to be paid from Intel CDW First Book Grant Fund.
Second.
Second. All right.
No problem. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Yes, Mr. Phelps, I have a question. Thank you. Yeah, I, this is a, a new item to the agenda. I know it went out earlier today. Do we foresee this is all that we're going to need for, for the hotspots? Or do we foresee the possibility that we may need more in the future?
I think this is to start off with.
Can you hear me?
Mr. Goldsboro, but I do believe that we may have to add them depending upon what families need.
I, I guess we'll get a better indication after the next couple of days.
Yes. Mr. Sonnet, I did add you in here. Would you like to add anything?
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. So yeah, at the moment, we're going to have 10, but this grant, we received a $4,000 stipend to reimburse. For families without internet, so we're going to utilize that. 10 is safe right now, but we do foresee more coming. I'm working with Ms. Lambert on identifying students who might need it.
Okay.
All righty. Be good, Mr. Goldsboro.
Yeah, just how, how can families get in contact if, if there is a situation in which they might need this?
Ms. Lambert and her team with the social workers have been reaching out and identifying, but they can also reach out to us at techhelp@interborisc.org. They can reach out to their building principals or Ms. Lambert and her team.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Sonic and Mr. Goldsboro. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 7-0. Next up, Mr. Evans, 13.
From the Office of Facilities, motion 13.1 and 13.2 that the filing items be approved.
Second.
Motion have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Mr. President, I have just a quick comment.
Yes, Mr. Chavon.
Just, I know Mr. Goldsboro asked about 13.1 at the work session, but just for the public, just to know that that two, almost $300,000 is coming from. State money that we received from Mr. Galloway and Mrs. Riley and the team writing the grant for, I believe, the Safe Schools Grant from the state. So I just want to commend them for their work on putting that together and how fortunate we as a district are. I think we almost got half a million dollars from the state for the Safe Schools Grants, and part of it is going towards this. So really excited over the, the facilities updates that we're able to do with this grant money.
Yes, absolutely. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries 7-0. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 14 that the Board authorizes and directs the Solicitor to initiate and prosecute real estate tax assessment appeals from significantly undervalued 2021 real estate tax assessments that resulted from the county-wide reassessment. Board authorizes and directs the Solicitor and the District's Real Estate Appraiser to determine the appropriate assessments to appeal without consideration. without consideration of the property type in accordance with the district's standard methodologies that have been approved by the Executive Director of Operations slash Business Administrator.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries 7-0. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 15 that the board authorizes and directs the solicitor to initiate and prosecute appropriate legal action to attempt to remedy the unfair and inequitable shift of the real estate tax burden to the district's residential property owners that has resulted from the countywide reassessment.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries 7-0. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 16 is a roll call motion that the Board of School Directors approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Interboro School District and the Interboro Transportation Association effective July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any questions or comments from the board? Uh, hearing none. Ms. Coldwell, could we have a roll call on this, please?
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Shabon?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries 7-0. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 17 is also a roll call motion. The Board of School Directors approve the compensation agreement between Interboro School District and the Supervisor Coordinator Group effective July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Coldwell, could we have a roll call on this, please?
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Shabon?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries 7-0. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 18 is also a roll call motion that the Board of School Directors approve the contract between the Interboro School District and David S. Criscolo effective July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Uh, Ms. Coldwell, could we have a roll call on this, please?
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Shabon?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries 7-0. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 19 that the Board of School Directors approve the independent contractors agreement between Interboro School District and Medical Consultant Dr. David Webner effective September 16th, 2020 to June 30th, 2021, at an hour, hourly rate of $200 to be paid from district funds.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries 7-0. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 20 that the Board of School Directors cast their votes for the following Pennsylvania School Board Association's slate of candidates as follows. President-elect David Hine, Vice President Daniel O'Keefe, Treasurer Michael Gasser, Western at Large Marcia Plata, Section 2 Advisor Amy Chemick, Section 4 Advisor Brian Petola, Section 6 Advisor Andrea Kristoff, PSBA Insurance Trust Trustees Michael Fashionetto and Marion Neal, Forum Steering Committee Stephen Schrocky and Tracy Long.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Uh, Mr. Evans, that was a great job with all them names. I want to tell you right now. That was very common. Very good. Hearing no comments. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 7-0. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 21 that the Board of School Directors approve the second reading of the following policies in the category of operations. 815.2 District-Issue Personal Learning Device Program, first reading. 816 Use of Livestream Video for Purpose of Distance Learning, All-Therapy.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 7-0. Next motion, Mr. Evans.
Motion 22 that the Board of School Directors accept the resignation of School Board Director Jennifer Vericchio, Representative Glenn Oldenborough, Region 1, Precinct 1 and 6, effective August 31st, 2020.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Yes, I, Mr. Phelps.
Mr. Goldsboro, yes.
I would like to just thank Ms. Vericchio for her time and commitment to the school board while she was still on, uh, while she was on the school board and, uh, for input in discussions and decisions that were made, uh, for the benefit of the district.
Thank you, Mr. Goldsboro. Any other, uh, comments? Uh, myself, like Mr. Goldsboro said, you know, the entire board would like to thank her. She did a good job, uh, as a board member. She had a lot of input, had a lot of good ideas. Uh, she was a very strong board member and we will miss her. Hearing, uh, any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries 7-0. Do we have any old business? Hearing none. Any new business? We will now hear from our superintendent, Ms. Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Uh, I do have a couple of announcements. First, I would like to thank the many parents who participated in all of the schools' town hall meetings that took place over the last two weeks. We had a lot of parents who participated. Uh, the administrators put together some very nice presentations, sharing important information that parents, uh, need to be aware of upon returning to school and virtual learning starting tomorrow. Um, parents had great questions and, uh, I hope that they found those informative and helpful. Um, we are planning to hold a few more of those town hall meetings with our nursing staff, um, on September 29th and 30th. We will send out some communication about that. Um, those will be focused on our medical procedures and protocols as we return to school. So parents understand how we will be, um, handling students who may be exhibiting symptoms of COVID. Um, and we just want to make sure parents are informed and are able to ask questions um, that are pertinent to that, to that situation. Also, based on some discussion with the building administrators and, um, directors, we're going to be revising the dates when we were holding our back to schools, our virtual back to schools. They were starting next week. Um, and we felt that we needed to give teachers and our administrators some time um, to focus on the virtual learning and we're going to move those, um, into October. This did, do, the change in those dates did not require the board to do a revision with the calendar. We will be updating them tomorrow, posting them and sending them out to, um, all of our parents. So please look for that tomorrow as well. Um, I'd like to wish everyone luck, thank our teachers, our administrators, as we do begin virtual learning tomorrow. Um, and we'll continue to provide updates on our return to school. We are still looking at an October 5th return date. Um, and if there's anything that we can do to possibly start, um, earlier, we will do that. But right now, we are on track with our October 5th date. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Uh, do we have any comments from any other board members?
Mr. Phelps, I just had a quick comment.
Uh, yes, Mr. Shabon.
I just, uh, there were a couple of, uh, contracts that were on the agenda. Rather than speaking on each one, I just wanted to thank all of the parties, um, for negotiating with us. Um, you know, I think they both, all the contracts are in the best interest of both parties. I also want to, uh, thank Mr. Criscolo, you know, for agreeing to another five-year deal. I know that we are lucky to have him as the HR Director. Um, he puts in a lot of long hours to help our district out. So I just wanted to thank him and I, you know, uh, the other groups for negotiating with us and with me.
Thank you, Mr. Shabon. Mr. Goldsboro, did I see your hand go up, sir?
Yes, you did. Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Uh, I would like to reiterate, uh, what Mr. Shabon said. Uh, and, uh, also, uh, uh, beyond that, I want to thank, um, Mrs. Riley, uh, the administrative team, uh, the, the board directors and all of the teachers and staff that have been, uh, getting everyone together and ready for tomorrow. I want to wish everybody, uh, the best of luck. And, and, uh, and for all, every, all in the community, a little grace over the next couple of days. Um, it's, uh, as a teacher myself, I know what I went through the first couple of days. So, um, a little grace is, uh, will go a long way and, uh, I just wish everyone, uh, uh, very much, uh, very much luck tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Goldsboro. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none. Um, I had a few things I wanted to say. First of all, uh, I would love to wish Dr. Ekman a happy birthday. Today is your birthday. Yes. So congratulations. I, I think she turns like 24, 25 today, something like that. Um, and I know, uh, I know how she spent her birthday, I'm sure, working tirelessly on this, uh, virtual learning process that we are involved in. So, uh, again, here's another administrator of, it's in our district that goes above and beyond, you know, as usual. That's, that's what I'm gonna call our administrators. The above and beyond administrators because they work tirelessly. You know, it just, they just put so much effort in. And I just want to thank you, Dr. Ekman. You did a great job. You got everything up and running. I know you weren't getting much sleep. I heard, I heard how miserable you were. But, but we do appreciate it. Okay? And, uh, the other thing I would like to say is, uh, Ms. Kuduski, I want to congratulate you for getting back on the board. Um, I can't tell you how excited I am. You know, you're not just another board member. You're, you're a dear friend and, uh, I appreciate you coming back into this and we can certainly, uh, use you on this board. You, you bring a lot to, uh, from your experience.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. I, I appreciate that vote of confidence.
Yes, absolutely.
I look forward to serving the school district again.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Kuduski. We appreciate that. Okay, any other comments? Hearing none. The Interboro School District will continue to hold all future meetings remotely until further notice. Please visit the Interboro School District website at www.innberorschooldistrict.org for further information. On Monday, October 5th, 2020, a Finance GBO Committee meeting will be held at 7:00 PM. The next work session of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be held on Monday, October 19th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. The next regularly monthly public meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be held on Wednesday, October 21st, 2020 at 7:00 PM. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming and your time. Appreciate it.